Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your service to our community. I am, first of all, very grateful. I'm David Hunter, 3702 Eagle Drive, just to go through that. I'm very grateful for all of you and your service. I realize what a difficult job it is, and particularly with your focus on such important priorities as our lowering costs of utilities for all of the citizens of Vero, and the importance of keeping a clean environment in Lagoon. I went through with you an earlier city council meeting where you had almost three and a half hours on the lagoon and on the power plant, so I know how much you know about that subject, and they're important topics, and I respect you for what you're doing. As far as the lagoon is concerned, I actually had an idea while Dr. Ritter was speaking, that maybe we ought to have something like Adopt a Kilroy program, so that individuals or groups could raise a small amount. I think they're—I'm not sure what the price of them are, but having a group or an individual adopt one and then have it with their name on it and put it out into the river might be a way of supplementing the monitoring, which is certainly very important and would help us.
I'm actually having a meeting on Thursday with some members of her group and Commissioner Zork, and I'll bring that up. Thank you.
Okay, good, good. Well, anyway, the purpose of my being here today is to appraise the council about our situation with vacation rentals and short-term rentals, and to try to give you a little bit of background, since there's never been a real briefing of the council as a whole on this issue. Vacation rentals and transit rentals are a legitimate business activity, and in the areas in which they might be properly zoned to occur, I am all for them. The question we're really raising today with you is, should they be allowed in every part of the city, or should they only be allowed in areas that would be appropriately zoned for them? The reason I got involved in this—it wasn't my great interest in the subject, it was that I had a property near me that engaged in this activity, and over a period of more than a year, I was working with code enforcement and their people to try to restrict and restrain that kind of activity. Examples of it being five or six cars coming in and a group of people coming to a small house, a three-bedroom house that was converted into four, and having eight or 10 or 12 people clearly over the occupancy of the house in there for four days, five days, or a week. They were—as vacationers traditionally are—they were going to be celebrating, so they would head out to the pool and have parties. They were often causing noise and disruption to the neighbors that were in the area. The fact is, it disturbs the tranquility of a residential neighborhood when you have a house converted into a hotel. And I say "converted into a hotel" because essentially, that's what a short-term vacation rental or a rental of under 30 days is. And I provided the council a description—in—you may have it hopefully available—the public lodging establishment as defined by the State of Florida's Business and Professional Regulations. And they specifically define public lodging establishment as a transient—or non-transient establishment that is rented to guests, and transient establishment as a public lodging establishment rented for less than 30 days. Now, this definition of transient as less than 30 days is applied by the State of Florida by its Florida Business and Professional Regulation. The Florida Senate—this is also provided to you—the Florida Senate actually passed a statute that's 509242, which is Public Lodging Establishment's classification. And within that, vacation rental is subcategory C. And it says specifically that it's a unit, single-family, two-family, other-dwelling unit, that is also a transient public lodging establishment. So they define in the Senate of Florida that a vacation rental is a transient public lodging establishment, and the Business Department of the State of Florida defines a transient public establishment as renting for less than 30 days. So—and for running a business called a transient vacation rental, you need a State of Florida license. The license is actually referred to as HR 7028, Application for Vacation Rental License. Anyone who is running a vacation rental without such a license is doing so illegally and in violation of the State of Florida. And if they obtain such a license, by definition, that license says you are running a transient establishment. Now, if you have a city code, as Vero does, which identifies under Chapter 62, Non-Residential Districts, Article 3, Section 6235, permitted uses—it basically—for non-residential districts, it says guest houses and transit quarters and motels and hotels are allowed in C1 and C1A. That's commercially-zoned areas. The same areas that we allow hotels and motels, we allow guest houses and transient quarters, transient being less than 30 days, defined by the State of Florida. Now, we do not mention in our code, under Chapter 61, Residential Zoning, anything about short-term rentals or transient quarters. The reason is, you do not mention all of the things that are not covered when you are describing your code. We do not mention that there are no airports allowed in residential areas, that there are no gas stations allowed in residential areas, that there are no pizza parlors allowed in residential areas. By definition, if it's not mentioned, it's not allowed. So our code of the city, in my opinion, is very clear that we do not allow transient quarters, including transient vacation rentals, in residential areas. And I think that the case that was presented to the Code Enforcement Board, which is why you're hearing this today—the case was unfortunate for several reasons. One, the Code Enforcement Board may not have understood these issues. They're not lawyers, they're not elected officials. It was not really perhaps within their mandate to be ruling on such an ethereal subject as the definition of transient. It would have been more appropriate for yourselves to make that decision. And in fact, if you do not agree to take this matter to court by your inaction, you will have ineffectively voted to throw out our zoning code. That's what will have happened, because we need to return to the status quo, which is to say that we have a code for zoning for vacation rentals and for other transient rentals. And I should add, I am not against tourism. I am very much pro-tourism. There are many hotels in our city, there are many hotels in the areas near me that are designated as Commercial District, and have hotel managers, and have the safety to look after the guests, and have regulations about how the guests must conduct themselves, all of the things that occur in a normal hotel occupant situation. I should clarify that a short-term transit rental is not a rental like a tenant and a landlord. It's less than 30 days, and the relationship is one of an operator of a hotel and the occupant who is a guest of that hotel. It is not under the tenant-landlord relationship. That's my understanding. So we don't have the same circumstance. I'm in favor of rentals, even seasonal rentals. A seasonal rental, in my view, is two months, three months, four months during the winter or during the summer. I don't mind, as long as it's a longer-term period. If you don't have that sort of lengthy stay, you don't get to know these people. These people that come to your neighborhood are there for a week or there for three or four days, and their focus is on themselves and not on our community. They're not interested in our schools, they're not interested in our city government, they're only interested in having a party. And so the point of tourism is that we've got lots of good hotels that can take these people in. I've talked to several hotels here locally. I know that South Beach Place attended the Code Enforcement Board meeting, because he was very concerned about what was happening. Unfortunately, he couldn't speak, because the board did not allow public comment. And the Holiday Inn—
Wait a minute, Mr. Hunter, just a minute. Wayne, the Code Enforcement Board didn't allow public comment?
No, sir, that's an adversarial proceeding, where only the parties to the case can be heard. And as I explained at the hearing, only if someone is called as a witness, because it would step on the due process rights of the other side.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. You got my attention when I said that.
Right. Well, it got my attention, and it got several people's attention, that we felt excluded from the—even the ability to present and our side of the case. Clearly, that was a difficulty. We did have people at that Code Enforcement Board that wanted to present some additional information and were not allowed to do so because they were not sworn in as witnesses. But as I—to go back to the hotels—the Carolyn Evans at the Holiday Inn Oceanside, she has expressed to me strong concerns about this, and other hoteliers—that they are going to lose business, because when you set up a rival hotel industry all across the community in residential areas—and that's what it is—those people that come there will not stay in the hotels, they will stay in those residential guest houses or those residential bed and breakfasts. And a vacation rental is nothing but a bed and breakfast without breakfast. So, again, in terms of promoting property rights, some people would argue that we really shouldn't restrict property rights, that it's private property. I understand those arguments. But zoning, in a way, protects our property rights, because it allows us to conduct our business in areas appropriate to where they're conducted. You would not want to have a gas station operating right next to your residential home. You would not want to have a pizza parlor operating right next to your residential home. I would maintain that if you—most people would not want to have a residential home right next to a hotel. There are buffer zones for commercial areas, and so the concept of having zoning is part of property rights. And it's not that we're trying to take away the right of someone to use their property to their full enjoyment. If they didn't want to have a residential property, they should move somewhere else. There are areas out in the county where there's no zoning restrictions, and if you wanted to conduct yourself, that would be totally appropriate. But in the city of Vero, with our style of life, with our tranquil, harmonious, cultural, educated, refined society—that's part of what makes Vero unique, and that's what draws many people from all over the country to this area to live and to retire and to work. I think we have to preserve that quality of life, and this is an important part of it. So, in closing, I'd like to just say that I would very much appreciate your support for taking this code—unfortunate Code Enforcement decision up as a possibility of referring it to further legal consideration outside of the city council, to the Circuit Court, I think, is the next step. And if we can get this overturned, then we can refine the terminology that we have in our code, so that no one else will make a mistake and misread what we actually have in the code. It's there. It might help to clarify it a bit, but it's there, and we shouldn't be throwing it out. Certainly, it would be at great detriment to our society and our community. I would like to introduce Honey Manous, who's following up, as she's got some additional comments from the neighborhood association.
Sir, I just wanted to make one comment on something you said. You said that none of the members of the Code Enforcement Board were lawyers. And in fact, one of the members, Mr. Richardson, did graduate from the University of Florida with a doctor of law, and he practiced for many years and was a—worked with the Internal Revenue Service for many years. But I did want to make sure that we weren't disparaging him by saying none of them were lawyers, when he was—he is a lawyer.
All right, I understand. And I did not realize that he was, so my apologies on that point. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Honey Manous, I live at 27 Starfish Drive. I've been a resident of this city for 25 years, in that same house. I served 10 years as president of my homeowners' association, and I currently sit on the Board of Directors. Neighborhoods are very important to me. I'm also chair of the Executive Committee of the Indian River Neighborhood Association, and as the name implies, we work on behalf of neighborhoods throughout the county. My prepared comments right now are about our neighborhoods in the city and the matter before us, specifically the recent action of the Code Enforcement Board upholding an appeal of a fine. This fine was for a short-term transient rental of a house in a single-family neighborhood. That's the issue. There were many complaints from neighbors about the ongoing transient rentals at this house, and it finally ended up that the owners were fined. They appealed the fine to the Code Enforcement Board, and three votes upheld that appeal. I can't begin to tell you the shock that is going through this community as more and more people learn about what has happened. I have copies here of emails that have come into City Hall regarding their concerns about this. And I haven't counted these, but these came in over eight days, as I see them. Our codes and our zoning on this matter have been in place for many, many years, at least the 25 that I have been here. And people relied on those regulations, because they provided for the stability of our neighborhoods. It allowed people to live in their homes, and they could expect to live with peace and security. There's never been anything fuzzy or vague about this. The city has not permitted short-term rentals in city—in single-family neighborhoods, and the state defines that rental term as 30 days or less. And a short-term rental has never been listed as allowable use in single-family residential neighborhoods. And Mr. Hunter has just, you know, explained that to you. But if there's any further emphasis that's necessary, let me just please say this. Back in 2011, and I believe you were all sitting up there, the state enacted legislation prohibiting restrictions on short-term rentals. But they provided an exception to any local government which already had these restrictions in place. And Vero Beach had these restrictions in place, and council did nothing to alter that. They were allowed to stand, and that was two years ago. But now you have a Code Enforcement Board with a rogue action. They upheld that appeal, and in essence, what they've done is they've thrown out all of our regulations in this regard, and it opens up every neighborhood to transient rentals. I can't say it more clearly. That action of the Code Enforcement Board must be appealed to the courts, because if it is allowed to stand, what we're doing is allowing three unelected people to change the quality of our life. It's just that simple. These codes and regulations that protected our neighborhoods and provided for their stability, these codes that enhance the value of our homes, they're gone. They're gone. Transient renters in single-family neighborhoods have no investment in these neighborhoods. They have no obligation to any community-strengthening activity. Furthermore, they take business away from legitimate places like hotels, and they also hurt our restaurants. These actions, and how they're hurting our economy, it's a ripple effect. One business to another business, to jobs, to families, and ultimately to our tax base. It is not a pretty picture. The cost of hiring an attorney to appeal the Code Enforcement Board's action is going to be minimal compared to economic damage that's going to happen if that appeal—if their action is allowed to stand. Please act this evening to appeal that action of the Code Enforcement Board to the courts. We need to have these short-term transient rental restrictions in place for the peace, the safety, and the welfare of our community. And just let me add this. If there is a wish in our community to expand the zoning to provide for legitimate transient rentals, then let's let that conversation begin. But our concern right now is to restore the protections that the city has always provided to its neighborhoods, and appealing to the Circuit Court is the only way that can be done now. Please act and protect our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the public comment section of the program. If anyone else would like to speak to the council, please come on forward. And your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. My name's Randy Frye. I reside at 902 Seagrape Lane. Much like the lagoon is being preserved, I want our community to be preserved. And by doing so, I would like to persuade you to act appropriately and not allow less than 30-day rentals in our community. I'm just here trying to preserve everything the way it is, and I've seen it go full circle next door to me at 906 Seagrape Lane. It was a single-family home, single-family resident. A developer came in, built the house, and then started renting it on a less-than-30-day —as a vacation home. I would be surprised when I would come home and see cars everywhere, people that stayed in the house, the transients, aren't familiar with our trash pickup, and things just got really out of hand. And I can tell you, it's a nightmare. It's gone back now, single-family resident, it's really nice, people live there, it's quiet. And I would like to persuade you, please, don't let vacation rentals happen in this town, whatever that takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, council. George Baczynski, 1825, 21st Avenue. I just wanted to remind the council that there is a law known as the Law of Unintended Consequences, and when we act, invariably, a lot of other things happen which we didn't want to happen. And in this particular situation, we define short-term rentals as less than 30 days. What's to stop people renting for seven days, three days, by the hour? If you have no regulation, you can't stop any of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
My name is Ann Rogers, and I live at 3626 Indian River Drive East in Vero Beach. Before I make comments, I want to say you can adopt a Kilroy. The Vero Beach—members of the Vero Beach Yacht Club and the Vero Beach Power Squadron went together. We've adopted one, and it's sitting out in front of the city marina. So you can go together and do that. Just a few comments. Living in Central Beach, we are an ungated residential community, therefore, we don't have bylaws limiting how long homeowners can rent their property, as you would find in a gated community. Therefore, we have to rely on the city to enforce the zoning rental laws. The charm of Central Beach is that it is consisting of families of all ages. As a family neighborhood, we need to be protected from those who want to turn it into a beach rental honky-tonk area, renting their properties by the day, the week, or the month, to multiple people with multiple cars, and who, because they aren't owners, don't care about their behavior or the quality of life of their neighbors. We are not a short-term rental or boarding house area. Yes, we understand that many people in the area are underwater in their mortgages, they're facing foreclosures, they're facing short sales, and one can understand they want to do anything they can to save their houses. However, they're doing it with a blatant disrespect of their neighbors, and the question is, why is this allowed? I imagine if the owners who own several homes in Central Beach had short-term rentals or boarding houses next to their primary home, they wouldn't be happy campers. There's also plenty of hotels and commercial rental properties available without impacting the quality of our Central Beach neighborhood, and I understand—I would say that's for all the neighborhoods in Vero. You've helped us in the past with traffic issues, which impacted our area, and helped us be able to have the peace, safety, and serenity that we need, and we hope that you'll continue to do so.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. And your name and address for me.
My name is Charlie Myers. I live at 7104 Eden Road. This has nothing to do with what we've been listening to about. This has to do with the treatment of the employees of the city of Vero Beach. After 30 years of the city, I've decided to retire. I would like to stay longer, but it's not in my best interest to stay. I would like to say I love my job and the people I work with, but I'm tired of feeling like a piece of garbage you put on the side of the road. For the past four years, we've had no raises, no benefits of any sort. What we do get, we end up having to pay extra for. The cost of living keeps going up and up. I'm tired of seeing good employees threatened with loss of jobs, a reduction in pay, or move to other departments with less pay. You, Mr. City Manager, I wish you had met John a little years ago. He was the city manager then. He stood tall for the employees of the city of Vero Beach. He understood how we had our hardships, and he was there to back us up. Lastly, I hope you—as you piece this out to the subcontractors and get your FPNL contract on the road, I hope you get what you want and not what you really deserve. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Caroline, again. 5151 North A1A, Vero Beach, Florida, 32963. I did bring some backup. I couldn't find my FERC document, so I know you have it somewhere. If not, I will go online and get it. I am here—I'm sorry that Mr. Igo left, because this concerns the—this concerns the electric. The final term sheet—I'm not sure the one I have is the final term sheet. Is there another one that's floating around somewhere? My concern is, how is the municipal debt going to be paid off? And that's items one there. We have $43,130,000 in debt. There are municipal bonds. Our coverage is extraordinary. I'd love to own it. Unfortunately, this kind of thing goes investor to investor or municipal to municipal. Excuse me. FPNL will not be able to assume that. If you think about Duke Energy and Progress Energy, Duke—they assumed all of Progress's debt. It was huge, but they were able to do that. Ours is not huge, not at all. It's minimal. That's not the issue. Who's going to pay for that? Whose hide is that going to come out of? I certainly would hate to see our reserves used to pay our debt and have that benefit go to FPNL. This is a very serious matter, and there are implications for the IRS as well. Anyway, does anyone have any information on that? Has it been talked about?
Yes, ma'am. On the debt that is owed—
On the debt that is owed through the electric utility?
Yes, the bonds, the municipal bonds.
The bonds would be paid. We have a call provision on a portion of those bonds, and at closing, they would be paid with the proceeds. Then we have a closing that will be two to three years beyond that, and what we will have to do is place that money in escrow in order to pay those bonds off when they come due, and we have.
Oh, this is very sketchy. You're going to have to diagram that out for me, because there's very little proceeds from this sale.
Yes, ma'am. Initially, there will be a lot of proceeds, but that's part of the debt service. Yes, ma'am, we, well, we do have enough in the proceeds to cover the debt service.
I don't believe it. I don't believe it at all. Your figures and mine don't add up.
The $111,000, $111 million, the program of the debt service defees is part of that, as well as the payment to OUC and the other payment.
63, 64.6.
Jim and Carolyn, I would really suggest the two of you guys get together and sit down, so you can show her, because I'm a visual person, too. I like to see it and be able to compare. So if you guys could get together, maybe you could come to some kind of agreement. And if you still have a concern after he shows you how the numbers work, then come back and let us know.
We can break down the numbers. We have done that. I don't have that with me tonight, how we defees the debt is the essential part of it.
Be pleased to come in and speak with you. I'll call for an appointment.
Yes, ma'am, please.
And I want to thank you for allowing the Lagoon presentation, and all the rest has been most interesting and a rewarding time to be here.
Thank you, Carolyn. Good to see you always. Good evening.
Good evening. Rosemary Wilson, 1495th Avenue, Vero Beach. Surely, there's a way to resolve the zoning issue without litigation. The problem can be addressed by this council. You're all intelligent people. We all have to live together. Perhaps the city should look at the code and improve upon it, but we don't sue one another. Just make it right without nasty litigation.
Good evening, sir. Your name and address for me, please.
Good evening. My name is Randy Old. I live at 935 Seagrape in Oriamar. I witnessed the short-term rental on our street, and it was very inconvenient for everybody, and it really changed the way we live on our street. If this was handled during the regular year, we'd have a lot more people here. Most of our neighborhood, about 30% is there now, and I think the rest of the other 70% would be here and speak if this were held during the regular part of the higher part of the season. A lot of people really would have a problem with short-term rentals going on in their neighborhoods, and it behooves us not to allow this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak? Hello, Charlie. Oh, here we go. You two guys want to dance?
No. Not my type. I never go out with gray-haired people. My name is John Carroll, 422 Live Oak Road, Vero Beach, 32963. I made a presentation before the Code Enforcement Board several weeks ago, and I did receive a favorable response. Why is that? Because the code is ambiguous. It doesn't say what people think it says, and a lot of people, unfortunately, haven't read the code. The three gentlemen that I had the pleasure of serving on the Code Enforcement Board for over four years with, Mr. Richardson, retired attorney, been on the board nine-and-a-half years; Mr. Haggert, former Vero Beach police employee, on the board nine-and-a-half years; Kurt Noonan, he's the chairman, land development site and planning for Carter Engineering, has been on the board nine years. These people have sat in your seats and listened to people from an audience, not this big, though, an audience of people, and made decisions on behalf of this city. And I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that any, not one action, not one action, especially since I was on the board, has ever been brought to this council. Not one. The two people that voted against the craziness of this code were Harry Howe, he's been on the board less than a year, and Suzanne Schell, who's been on the board less than a year. I want to read the actual section, which we were cited under for 530 Camilla Lane. Section 60.11, conformity with regulations required. No building, structure, land, or water shall hereafter be used or occupied, and no building, structure, or part thereof shall hereafter be erected, constructed, reconstructed, located, moved, or structurally altered, except in conformity with the regulations specified for the district in which it is located and other applicable regulations of this title. What does that say? It doesn't say what you guys think it says. I'll tell you that. There's, Mr. McGary testified, sitting right in that seat, that there's no provision in the code for 30 days, that he has to rely upon the state to give him guidance, much like Mr. Hunter mentioned earlier, that somebody that is moving into the city to buy a single-family home, they don't know. Everybody says, well, we could rent our house. We could rent it while we're down in Fort Lauderdale, where we live in Maryland. We can use seasonal rental. You see the signs all the time. They're out there right now, seasonal rentals. What does that mean? Again, there's no definition. So why is somebody that leases a property for 31 days any different than somebody leases for 29 days? There's no code in this, in our ordinances that says, that defines it one way or the other. Why is one good and one is bad? Why is somebody leasing for 31 days going to be so much better to your community than somebody that's leasing for 29? The reality is, folks, that 40 to 45% of the people that we've leased to over the years are actually here on vacation, visiting their families and their friends, and we're graduates of Vero Beach High, or Sebastian, or St. Edward's. And they play golf in our community. They eat at our restaurants. They don't want to have four hotel rooms segregating their family. That's what the reality is. When I first came to Vero Beach in 2003, we leased houses, short-term rental, in Oriamar. Three different occasions, three different holidays, before we finally closed on a house in Oriamar. This thing's been going on all the time. The only difference is, now somebody's raised it up and said it's a big issue. The fact of the matter is, folks, you know as well as I do, there's people out there doing it. There's 400 listed in Indian River County, 200 or more are in the city. And that's been going on for many years. It's just easier to do it now. I really think it would be an injustice to the three members of your Code Enforcement Board that have almost served 10 years each, that know the code, and say, this does not say it's limited to 30 days. It doesn't. Never has, never will. Your decision today really doesn't change anything. And the fact of the matter is, the state, in their infinite wisdom, has said, we want vacation rentals. We will not allow any municipality or governmental jurisdiction restrict it. That's on the books. You cannot modify, amend, change. If it doesn't say it right here, it can't be enforced. I want to keep this short, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Turney, if you would.
Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you. My name is Tom Tierney, and my office address is 2101 Indian River Boulevard in Vero Beach, 32960. I am an attorney. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Carroll, and I represented them in the hearing before the Code Enforcement Board. I want you to remember that the Code Enforcement decision, which I received today, said that the code is vague on this issue, and therefore, there was no violation. At the Code Enforcement Board hearing, Mr. McGary, on behalf of the city, admitted that the definition that he was utilizing to cite the Carrolls was vague, and that there is no definition in the city code as to what constitutes either temporary or transient under the code. Mr. McGary utilized a definition he found in the Florida statutes. But as I pointed out at the Code Enforcement Board hearing, that there was another case in this state, there are two cases. One, in the Fourth District Court of Appeals, which encompasses Indian River County, another over in the City of Venice, where the City of Venice had a very similar ordinance, if not identical, as this one. The city staff decided to utilize the definition in the Florida statutes for, because there was none in the city code, as to what constituted, or what defined temporary or transient. Same problem you have in your code. And in that case, in the City of Venice, the, as Mr. McGary did, the city staff utilized the definition in the Florida statutes to say 30 days or longer is okay, less than 30 days is considered transient or temporary, and therefore prohibited in residential neighborhoods. The city found in that case against the homeowner for violating the short-term rental ban, the homeowner appealed to Circuit Court, as you are being asked to do today. And the Circuit Court said, the court required that a specific rental duration limitation be defined within the text of the ordinance itself, because, and I'm quoting now, "It is not possible for a property owner to anticipate that, for the purposes of the city code, it would be necessary to look under Chapter 509 of the Florida statutes to determine the definition of transient or temporary." The court went on to say, therefore, it is clearly erroneous for the city to graft definitions onto the city code from Chapter 509 of the Florida statutes. That case is squarely on point with this. And I don't know if you've consulted with the city attorney on this issue, but if you did, I know that he will tell you two things about appeals that you're contemplating. One is that 80 to 90% of any appeal is affirmed by the appellate court, whatever the lower court or lower tribunal decision is affirmed. And in a case like this, where all of the cases that have looked at this issue have found against the city, that percentage chance of success is very low, even lower than what I've described. I want to also comment on a couple of things that were said earlier in public comment about how this decision by the Code Enforcement Board affects the peace, safety, and welfare of the neighborhoods of the city. I want to remind you that the county commission of Indian River County dealt with this issue in June of 2012 and made a determination that it could no longer enforce a ban on short-term rentals. And that decision came down 14 months ago, and there hasn't been, the sky hasn't fallen, there haven't been any issues, there haven't been any problems, there hasn't been any controversy associated with that decision by the county commission. So I think that when people say that they are, that this is somehow going to affect the peace, the safety, and the welfare of the neighborhoods in the City of Vero Beach, I think they're exaggerating the scope of the problem. I would also like to say, from personal experience, that I've utilized, not in the City of Vero Beach, but I've utilized websites like Vacation Rentals by Owner to stay in people's homes for less than 30 days, for a week at a time when I go on vacation. And it, I don't, you know, my family doesn't take the trash out on the wrong day of the week. We don't have eight cars parked in the park, in the garage, or in the lawn of the homes that we stay at. The people that are describing that are describing a problem that could occur whether you have a 30-day or longer rental or a shorter-term rental. The problem may be more prevalent with short-term rentals, but there are ways to handle that problem that don't involve banning or trying to ban or appealing a decision by the Code Enforcement Board that would allow, effectively allow, short-term rentals in the city. You know, the sky's not going to fall. The sun will come up tomorrow, regardless of your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You've already had one chance. Let's let first-timers.
Sorry. I just felt since we had such an articulate defense of the Code Enforcement Board that it deserved at least a brief rebuttal. The question that Mr. Carroll raised of what's the difference between 31 days and 29 days, well, I think, as we already clarified, the State of Florida requires a license for a transient vacation rental dwelling for property that is renting out for less than 30 days. So there is, somebody in the State of Florida has made a pretty clear determination that there's a difference between 31 days and 29 days. And it's not me. It's somebody with a high-grade salary up there in the Florida Senate. As far as the question of not, we're exaggerating the scope of the problem, I would, because vacation rentals don't disturb, or transit rentals don't disturb the harmony of a neighborhood, we've lived it. I've lived it. Randy has lived it. Mr. Old has lived it. A lot of the people that are here today have actually experienced this, so we don't have hearsay knowledge. We have live, experienced knowledge of what happened, and that's why we're here. So I don't think it's a question of the sun will come up tomorrow. I think that's not quite an accurate statement in relation to this problem. And as far as the appeal not likely to succeed, we have it on good opinion from some very experienced attorneys, that an appeal by the city council to court has a very strong likelihood of succeeding because it is put forth by the city fathers and mothers in its being forwarded to the courts. It is not a traditional or typical type of appeal. And that's true. The Venice case is out there. But that was one judge in one case. And I don't know that we should preclude ourselves from trying to protect our law and our tranquility just because one city, in one case, lost. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward. Good evening, Charlie.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor, staff. My name is Charles Wilson. I am a city resident. My post office box is P.O. Box 651114, Vero Beach, Florida. Just to mention as to why I do that, I had a discussion with Ms. Vock about a month ago about the process of giving one's home address at this council meeting. And it seems like everybody in the world wants to know where I live.
I already know.
Yeah, I did send pictures to some of the press, and one of the press members wrote me back and said, "The cactus in your front yard is leaning to the left." And I wrote, I wrote her back and said, "The cactus in my front yard is leaning to the left in the city." But the reason I talked to Tammy Vock about it, frankly, is, I don't know if you recall, but some years ago, I had my house broken into. And I frankly would rather not give my home address.
That's fine, Charlie.
On live television. But I, and I don't think it's a good idea for young ladies or anybody to come up here on live television and tell some, anybody out there that they're not home. So just to answer the question of why I'm giving that address. The reason I came up tonight mainly is, you know, we do a few things wrong, but we do so many things right as a city, and you, as a council, have done so many things right. The police officer that was here early is just an excellent example. How proud can we possibly be of our city employees for that? The progress and the concern we're having for the lagoon, I'm able to listen to my dear friend, Ms. Gin. We disagree on some issues, but we're dear friends, and that's how we're supposed to behave. There are more things that bring us together than tear us apart, and that's why we're here. The purpose for my coming this evening is I want to reiterate and say again, congratulations to your courage for moving forward on this electric issue. You cannot know how much progress has been made, and for all the people who have just delighted every time we have a problem. I know it's got to be frustrating to have us move towards saving $24 million a year, but we need to keep doing that. And that brings us to some of the distractions, you know, that we're having. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I don't like to pretend to be a lawyer on television. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't like to pretend to be a lawyer on television, a lot of the people that have spoken this evening aren't lawyers, so the whole discussion about the rental situation, you know, as a community, it's an important issue. But we've never had that conversation. Unfortunately, it seems to me, I have read, I read the report, I read, and it seems to me that we missed our window of opportunity, that from 2008 until 2011, we knew that this situation existed. And from 2008 to 2011, when the state of Florida changed the regulations, we could have made any ordinance we wanted to. So the people that were supposed to bring that before council between 2008 and 2011 certainly should have known if they, that this legislation was going through the legislature. And as I understand it, there was discussion in the League of Cities about this very issue. So when we're deciding what to do about it, you know, there's a scene in Fiddler on the Roof, you know, where the guy comes up and he says something, and Tevya says, "You're right," and the other guy says something completely opposite, and he says, "You're right," and then the third guy says, "Well, they can't both be right," and Tevya says, "Well, you're also right." And that's pretty much where we are. Because I understand completely people's concerns about having rentals next door, but at the same time, do we know what the unintended consequences are? So that's my question. If you have pilot training, and you come here for three weeks because you're going to train out at flight safety, where do you stay? And if you're a family coming in for flight safety, do we tell them, "You can't stay in Vero Beach"? You know, that doesn't sound like a reasonable unintended consequence. What about historic Dodger Town? You know, what about people that come in to go to tournaments for a period of time? Where do they stay? Can you do a bed and breakfast? Can you live in a commercial property and provide hospitality at the same time? I don't know the answer to these questions, and I dare say that most of us don't. So I would think that having a discussion about this issue is important, but I'm concerned about why we didn't discuss this between 2008 and 2011 when we could do something about it. So I don't know, you know, what to do from here, other than, what we really need to do is follow the law. You know, we've seen some recent cases in Florida where everybody had an opinion, but in the final analysis, it was what the law said. And Mr. McGary, all due respect to Mr. McGary, one of the things that he said in his testimony during the code enforcement that I read was, "I have the sole option of interpreting this, and I don't care if you like it or not." I'm not sure that was a very appropriate thing for a staff member to say to any resident of our city.
Charlie, I don't think that's completely accurate, but go ahead.
I will, if you like, I will read it word for word. Would you like to hear it?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. McGary objected, he said, "The code gives him strict authority to do that. He doesn't know how more clearly it could be in the code, whether Mr. Carroll likes it or not." Quote, unquote.
Let's go ahead, Charlie. Let's move forward.
Okay, thank you. So the point that I have here is if that is the fact, and Mr. McGary, whoever, or the planning director, not an individual, but the planning director, has the sole authority to make this decision of interpretation, what happens when you change planning directors? What happens if you bring in a new planning director and he thinks differently? Are we going to go legal, not legal, legal, not legal, legal, not legal, depending on who we have as a planning director? You know, I don't think so. That's why the ordinances have to be clear. Now, we've had this problem before, okay? So what I would suggest, instead of terrorizing the code enforcement board, or listening to what happens on our blogs or their comments, or the phony papers, then what we need to probably do is we need to look at our ordinances and look at what our attorney is doing. He gave me some very good advice today, was very quick with his responses. It seems to me that we need to look at the ordinances because it is the city's responsibility to write clear laws. It is not our responsibility as citizens to guess what you mean. Okay? So I want to appreciate very much, your so fine work on the electric issue, let's get this behind us so we don't have to fight all these other battles. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Charlie. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to the council, please come forward.
Marco's first.
They can do the dance.
Thank you, counsel. Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue. The issue that's before you tonight to possibly consider doing an appeal, I would appreciate it if you discuss it, whether you're going to do it or not. Here's what happened to us in our neighborhood where this code that you have on the books helped us. We were faced with the real short-term, people coming and going in homes, you know, where they were there just for a few days. And it was really detrimental to our neighborhood. The code that you have on your books helped us alleviate some of those problems in our neighborhood, and it took a while. You actually really need to help us and do the appeal so we can keep this code. That's what I'm asking you to do. You also have to understand going forward, where you advertise on the internet for short-term rentals or whatever, you know, there is a place for the short-term rentals. The internet reaches many, many people all over the world. And what happens on these short-term, it could be a day, a gentleman pointed out, it could be an hour, it may, you may be able to push that off into your mind and say, "Well, that's really silly, that doesn't mean anything." Well, it does to me because we were faced with the downside a number of years ago in our neighborhood. And I can tell you right now, it wasn't pretty, wasn't pretty at all. And some of the folks that came into our neighborhood and other neighborhoods like ours really put a hurting on us. This code allowed us to address it legally where the city had enforcement powers to help us clean up some of those situations. So if you take this away from us, we're going to go right back to some of the problems we experienced, and back to the internet. You don't know who's going to come into the neighborhoods. Remember now, we're in the computer age. With your guest housing, short-term rentals, they're in areas where the zoning permits it, you heard tonight how the state defines it. You also, when you have these commercial establishments, you have, I call them property managers, they could be hotel managers or whatever, you do have folks on site to keep an eye on the situation. You heard tonight some of the adverse effects of how, what happens to people when these short, whatever you want to call them, vacation rentals, short-term rentals, next to them. You'll destroy the neighborhoods. People come to Vero for what we have to offer. The county chose to remove their codes off the book, that was their choice, that's their business. You know, we're very close to the ocean, we have beautiful parks here, that attracts a lot of people. Help us keep the protection in place. It's going to, hopefully, you know, you guys will discuss it, and we'll have to live with your decision. We need your help in the matter. Remember, you're there, you're our representatives, you're there to protect us and protect our neighborhoods. You're protecting us, our children, the retirees. And I don't want to go any further, but we were faced with some serious issues a number of years ago, and this code was a help to us, along with some of the other things we have. Thanks for your time, I know it's a long night for you guys.
Thank you, Ken. Hello, Mark, you are a patient person.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Mark Mutcher, I live in the city, I have an address. I have an address, I also have a post office box, 644316. And most of you know, I've been on the Planning and Zoning Board for 17 years now. I know from experience that we have a lot of code, and a lot of the code is just, I'll use the word crap.
Mark, just in case, here it is, right here.
Yeah, okay. Well, it looks pretty clean from here. And it needs to be cleaned up. I agree with Mr. Wilson's point that we had an opportunity to clean it up, well, the legislature was talking about, after a certain point, we're not going to be allowed to clean it up. And so it should have been done back then, but there were a lot of mistakes being made back then. I don't like rentals at all, hardly, I mean, I don't suppose you can stop an annual rental. That's where I'm coming from. We talked about the boarding house thing, and everybody said, "Oh, you can rent a room in your house to somebody to make some money." I don't agree. In a single-family neighborhood, I think it should be a single-family, you're not going to rent a bedroom to strangers and rent a bed and breakfast, even on a long-term basis. But that's more in the boarding house issue. And we've got the boarding house issue, and we've got the short-term rental issue. But in general, I just don't like rentals. But I'm going to approach this from a different tact, and that's, I'm going to put my taxpayer hat on, and I'm going to say that people were invited and encouraged to come to this meeting to tell you all to appeal because somehow, if you appeal, and you lawyer up, and you throw enough money at this issue, you're going to win. Well, that isn't the case. You may win, you may not win, but I think you need strong legal opinion before you even decide to file an appeal. Because filing an appeal is not going to be an inexpensive process, and I'd like you to either start or continue caring for our taxpayer dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else would like to speak to the council, please come forward. Hi, Brian.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Mark said crap, I said bull crap, I got thrown off, nothing happens. I don't get it. By the way, 50 percent of all the cases that go to trial, 50 percent have a lawyer that loses. Right? Pretty simple, basic math, you know, you do the math. And there's some people that have asked me to come here tonight, I wish I could just say no sometimes. And I don't enjoy being harsh to a fellow Vero Beach resident, and this whole thing has gotten harsh. And I've been asked to speak about an important issue, and it is important, and it's the Tracy Carroll thing, again. Not the same complaint, but the Tracy Carroll thing, again. And of course, the issue is today, can you rent your home for the night, by the week, by the hour? Whatever the timeframe is, it's all the same, it's about short-term rentals, not seasonal rentals, that's different. We're talking about short-term rentals, short-term, a night, whatever, an hour, I don't know what it is. So someone complains, and then we have a code question in the code enforcement board, a board of non-elected officials, decides that it's okay to rent short-term. And the person in question that owns the property, that's subject of the complaints, none other than, once again, Tracy Carroll...
Brian.
...a member of the taxpayer public...
Brian. Don't make it personal, okay? Talk in general terms.
I'm not making it personal, just telling them about who's involved here.
You keep referring to Ms. Bach.
Vero Beach resident. The person's a city council member, an elected official. An official is paid less than minimum wage for the amount of time it takes to do the job. So I tell you, that had me scratching my head. Because you got to think, if she's willing to do the job that it takes, you all know what it takes to do the job? And if she's willing to do that kind of job at that kind of salary, she must really want to serve and to protect the community. Because minimum wage is just not worth the job. And at minimum wage, you have to feel a little bad about someone making minimum wage, I do. I usually aren't living high off the hog. So I start to think, she's making minimum wage, she's before the code enforcement board, why? Because she's leasing a half a million dollar house next door to the beach for short-term, kind of like a hotel room. Only it's a half a million dollar mansion, pays over $7,000 a year in property taxes. I have no clue what her mortgage mat is, you do the math on this one. Then I go to the property pages website, and I find her home worth 1.3 million, she pays $19,000 a year in taxes on that, and she works for the city council member for less than minimum wage.
Brian.
Do the math.
I'm going to tell you one more time, don't make it personal, please.
And someone in this kind of shape making $10,000...
I've turned your microphone off if you didn't...
...paying $19,000 in taxes...
Officer, Brian, you're out of order. Officer, would you remove Mr. Hedy from the deus?
How do you pay $26,000 a year in tax on a $10,000 a year job? You do the math, that's me confused. To code enforcement, starting to get to pay fines, because she has decided...
You're out of order, Mr. Hedy.
How am I out of order?
I've asked you repeatedly not to make this personal, you're attacking a member of the council. You're supposed to listen for once, Brian.
I didn't attack anybody.
You did, you keep referring to Ms...
I'm standing...
I'm not going to argue, but you're out of order. He may remain in the council chambers.
I did. Yeah, I had that put in years ago.
Good evening.
Good evening, Linda Hillman, 2315 18th Avenue, Vero Beach. At our last city council meeting, which was August 20th, I was asked by Ms. Carroll not to make anything personal, again, because it is in the charter. So I went over the charter, and I did read it, and yes, indeed, it is in the charter. However, I hope you're all prepared to change that charter this evening, because in that charter, it also states that anyone who comes up to this podium must state their name and address. It is in the charter. Each and every time that Mr. Wilson has come up to this podium, he has given a post office box number. How come we have selective followings? Why is it that he is allowed to come up to this podium and not give his address? It is in the charter.
Mr. Command, is there any legal thing? I know police don't have to give their address.
No, and actually, we keep talking about a charter, but the provisions about council meetings is in the code, it's an ordinance. And really, actually, all it says is that, let me find the exact wording...
Please, because I did read it this evening. While he looks that up, we do not have the power to change the charter. The charter is voted on by all the residents, and it goes through a charter review process with a committee, and then it takes hearings and anything like that to change the charter itself. We have, the charter is a little bit, the code is the rest of this book.
I was speaking...
Yeah, and actually, it doesn't specify, it just says, "State your address." It doesn't say if it's street address, mailing address, what kind of ad, it just says address.
Okay.
We're all, now we all know.
And that's not in the charter, that's in the code.
That's in the code, okay. I was speaking 1 minute and 57 seconds at the last minute when Ms. Carroll asked me not to mention her personally. However, Mr. Wilson was allowed to speak for five minutes and 36 seconds and name every single person that he felt was against Ms. Carroll, Ms. Turner, Mr. Fletcher, for the utilities. He mentioned me, nobody stopped him. He mentioned the Vero News Weekly, nobody stopped him. They let him continue for over five minutes, quoting from the newspaper, quoting from my Facebook page, quoting from blogs, yet he was allowed to do that. But I was asked not to make it personal. How personal do you think that was? And every single one of you sat here, excluding Mayor Fletcher, and allowed that to happen. Now, I guess if I can't make it personal by naming a council member, I would suppose that my council members would also protect me against someone who's up here making slanderous comments. But I guess, again, it's the followers and who they're following that is allowed to do what they want to do. So I just want to remember all, I just want to remind all of the 817 people who did sign the petition on the recall for a council member, and the other 743, that elections are coming up. Let's not forget that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to the council? Please come... Please come forward. Seeing no more, we'll close the public hearings.
Do we want to go ahead with the agenda item?
Yeah, we have moved 9B1 up to this current position here. You have comments, Jay?
Well, quite frankly, this is an issue that I really never wanted to address. I know during a down economy, people do what they can to keep their properties from foreclosure. I do have a number of those properties that are around my place. I don't enjoy them being there, but on the other hand, I don't enjoy seeing my neighbors who have properties have them get foreclosed on. This was an issue that, quite frankly, I would have rather seen pay a minimal fine and just kind of move on and not have to deal with this. Unfortunately, we can't clarify the ordinance. I guess the legislature closed that door 2011. So now we've got a decision of whether we, you know, we've got a door half open, do we open it all the way, or do we try to close the door? I'm not, not in favor of advertising to the world that we're open for short-term rentals. Quite frankly, I would have rather kept the issue quiet, but unfortunately, recent events forced, forced us to do something about this. So given that, I mean, I'll make the motion to appeal the decision.
I'll second it, but I have this comment. There is no judge here tonight, there's no judge on the Code Enforcement Board. There are some people, little lawyers, that have opinions. The only lawyers that really, that I heard argue were arguing from one point of view. You know, you have courts to decide what the law is, to decide what the law is. And we can claim, an attorney can claim the law is vague or not vague, a citizen can claim what the statute says or doesn't say. But there's none of the five of us, or four of us, as the case may be, that will have to rule on this tonight, that are lawyers, and there's none of us that are judges. And I agree with Mr. Kramer, right? It's unfortunate this was brought forward, but now that it's brought forward, I think it has to go to a real court and be decided one way or another by a judge. And then it is, it's just like, you know, you appeal to the Supreme Court. Once the Supreme Court decides, that's what we have courts for. And we've heard appeals tonight, we're not a court. I think we have to go to a court and have a court tell us. That's my comment.
Ms. Turner, you have any comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I think it's been very clear that there have been many years where there have been a proliferation of short-term rental. I mean, I have one in my, in my neighborhood around the corner from my street. This is not a new phenomenon for Vero Beach. We may have had a code like this, but we all know we have had short-term rentals in our city. I mean, over 200 listed right now. So this is not something new. Regrettably, I was going to say, and surely that this is being brought up against a city council member that's up for election, I mean, you can't help but feel that there's some political tones to it. There are many other people with short-term rentals that have not been prosecuted. Regrettably, in order to ascertain whether we have an enforceable code, our only option is to get a legal opinion, and that would be my recommendation, as opposed to going directly to, you know, to appealing this. But for council to request an independent legal opinion on this issue, and, you know, assuming that we get just such a positive go opinion, or wait till we get the results of that before we decide to file an appeal. And that's what I would ask council to do.
Ms. Carroll, you'd like to have any comments?
And I need to point out, Tammy probably spoke to you about any conflict.
Why don't you tell everyone about that?
Well, because you potentially have a financial conflict, you would not be able to vote on the motion.
She won't be able to vote, but she'll be able to comment.
But you have a conflict also.
She can still comment.
Is that correct?
Well, I have a conflict that I have in the code board.
Right.
Right.
Okay. My only comment that I was going to make, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember who brought this up, there's been so many different comments from the public tonight, but someone brought up the fact that there was a period of time when our Planning and Zoning Commission, our Planning and Zoning Board, had the opportunity to discuss this. And our Planning and Zoning Director came here a number of years ago from the Florida Keys, where short-term rentals were discussed ad infinitum and rules were made. The opportunity existed for him with his experience in the Keys to institute something like that here. He and I talked about this years ago, when he said in the Keys that he was very involved in the regulations that were put in there. And yet, one of his responsibilities, and he specifically stated that, is that he is the sole determinant of what
Interpretation.
this book says. This is the code of the city of Vero Beach. I cannot imagine how many of you have read this. I think Carolyn, you probably read it. I have actually read this. You guys probably read it, I couldn't tell you if you guys have read it. But there is a lot of stuff in here. There is codes on stuff from disorderly conduct. What is disorderly conduct? Well, if you want to know, it's in this book. If you want to know what type of clothing you need to wear to sell alcohol, you can be in touch with an R-rated section of the code, because, Mr. Degg, you probably read that part, right? I don't know.
You read the whole book.
You read the whole book, so you read that part, and that's kind of R-rated. But it also talks about development, a whole section in here. This section right here is just on land development codes. See that big section? That talks all the way from height limits on the beach to dog-friendly dining. So we touch on a lot of things in this book. But what the Code Enforcement Board, with 28 years of combined experience, sitting right here, looking at the code, reading this whole book, 28 years, volunteers in this community, someone made a joke about I'm here on less than minimum wage, well, they're not paid a penny for the 28 years they've sat on code enforcement and read this book and determined when people had violations of the code and when they didn't. We're telling them that thanks a lot for your service for 28 years. Now we're going to take it to court. I asked Tammy today, Tammy's been here 30, I'm sorry, shouldn't have said that out loud, a long time. And in 30 years, she has never seen a single case where the city council tried to overthrow what those volunteers who have read this thing, tried to overthrow one of their decisions. I just want to make sure that everyone on this board was aware of the fact that the only person in this city that determines what the code is, by his own admission, was the Planning and Zoning Director. He had an opportunity to change the code. He missed that, he knew what was going on, we, he and I talked about it years ago, and yet it wasn't done. And if he feels responsible, then perhaps that's a point he needs to take up with his own manager, which is our city manager.
Mrs. Carroll, you're making the assumption that the code is not lawful, does not meet the requirements of the law. You don't know that. I would also tell you that I feel that any city council has a responsibility of supporting its city manager, its officers, and the people that report to them. And I think we have an obligation to Mr. McGary, rather than saying Mr. McGary could have done this or that, to have, to find out what the law is. Thank you.
The only way I would answer was that will, I'll ask this for Mr. Comant, based on his judicial experience. Will a finding tell us what the law is, or will the finding simply say, if the finding is found the way that some of the members of the public wanted to say, will that finding actually allow short-term rentals or disallow short-term rentals? Is that what the finding will be, or the finding will simply say that, no, the code is vague?
Well, basically, in this type of appeal of appeal, there's three things that the courts look at. And one of those is the most important one, and it's basically, did the board, did the Code Enforcement Board follow the law? And that could be in the interpretation of what the code means. If the appellate court didn't agree, if, well, the simpler one is if appellate court agrees it's vague and therefore unenforceable, that's the opinion you're going to get from the court. If they disagree, they would reverse the Code Enforcement Board's findings and send it back probably to the Code Enforcement Board to enter an order consistent with the evidence that was presented, or maybe even have a rehearing.
But you mentioned something important there, and that is that the circuit board, is that a judge or a jury?
No, it's typically a three panel.
And they will be looking at not new data or no information. They will be solely looking at the record
At the cold record.
that took place here, when the Code Enforcement Board looked at it. And anything that was presented to them and what their information was.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, I feel the only way we're going to find this thing as good or bad is to go to the courts. I'll support the appeal for the Code Enforcement Board to go to Circuit Court. We have a motion, a second. We've had discussion, all in favor of appeal?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed, and once again, I would like to see us go to an attorney first to see about getting an opinion before we go to court.
Yeah, I thought about that, Plar, and the only thing you're going to get from another attorney is another opinion.
Probably right.
I mean, it won't hold, it won't do us a damn bit of good. We need, one way or the other, we need to get this settled.
They're going to want the business.
Yeah, yeah. We'll get a definitive answer from the courts. One way or the other, we'll find out whether short-term rentals are legal or not. Thank you.
You're fine.
Moving on then to item D, adoption of the consent agenda. Is anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull item six, I had a question there.
Item six. Anyone else have anything?
Yes, I have a question on nine. It's a very small question, it's just something I don't understand.
And I'd like to pull number eight.
Wait a minute, you've got me covered up.
Sorry.
Is that it?
Okay. I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the admission of six, eight, and nine.
Second.
Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
And I guess I'm at first with six.
Yeah, go right ahead. Number six.
Sorry, I'm trying to get it. Just had a question on number six, was, out of the justification, it says that we're rightsizing the electrical group, that's why, this paragon electric contract, yeah. I certainly could use a little more discussion on it.
What we're really doing is making the emergency services contract more flexible. For example, when we lay off some of our maintenance people, we will be able to go back and use this contract for services. Rob is up here, because water and sewer being a user of that, and with the reduction of those forces allows us to use this contract.
I'd still like to see the reduction of forces.
Well, I think in his case, you've seen substantial reduction of forces.
Well, it was in a lab.
Well, actually, it's been greater than that, Rob.
Yeah, no, we've had a reduction of forces in a lot of areas, and one of the things that, years ago, we had two electricians, now we're down to one. That was one of the reasons why we're looking at utilizing a contract to provide additional support when we need help, and this is a local contractor, and that's why we're looking at expanding. Originally, it was bid for emergency services only, and what we'd like to do is use it for daily operations on an as-needed basis.
And that's really, it's an on-as-needed basis. We don't have to pay anything unless we use the service.
No, I guess we just see with it being an unlimited contract, you know, and not having any kind of cost controls on it, that you could just say, okay, yeah, open end, I'm going to call out for everything, instead of, you know, asking Joe next door to do it, you know. Should I'm going to call out for this?
We have an electrician, that we normally have the electrician. If the electrician needs work, or if the electrician is sick, I need, still need to have an electrician come and do work. If I have a motor failure and I got to replace a motor, electrician's the one that's going to have to, you know, unhook the motor so that you can hook a new motor up.
And we have no electricians in our facility group and any other group.
Not that work on 460-volt equipment. So this is an industrial electrician that I have to have somebody that knows what they're doing, working around that.
I think it still has an option to be abused.
Yeah, you're not talking about a guy that's changing light bulbs. You're talking about an industrial electrician.
It's not a little tingle when you make a mistake.
Yeah. I think it has an opportunity to be abused, but if Mr. O'Connor will supervise that one.
We will keep track of it, and we can also give a report, but the fact of the matter is, is what we're trying to do is we reduce our numbers, then we have to give reinforcement to that through some type of private, and that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, you're going to see this.
No, I'm in favor of staffing for our norm and not staffing for peak periods, and I realize that's probably what you're trying to have this services available for peak load, you know.
And not only water and sewer, but it would also be citywide if we needed it, as we reduce those numbers.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think Tom has used them in the past for stuff, and we've used, he's used our staff and we've used his staff when we can, but when you can't fall back on somebody else and you got to have something done, that we need to be able to go out to the private sector and utilize them. That's the only reason we're looking at using them.
Yeah, what we're really doing is clarifying emergency contract. You know, if it's extended out, it's only when there's a storm or something, but we're saying that we would prefer to use it if a pump goes down or whatever.
Okay. With that, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Item eight, Tracy?
Yes. Item eight is in regard to beach cleaning and maintenance, and we've had significant discussions about looking at a lower-cost contractor for the landscaping maintenance. And I just wanted to make sure that we feel comfortable with the vendor that is proposing this service. If we've looked at his background, if he has significant
Significantly lower.
people and equipment and everything, I just want to make sure we don't get into the same thing with our lovely beaches.
You got Monty's attention.
Sorry, Monty.
Be happy to address that. Monty follows Director Public Works, and again, I have great faith in our contracting out services to qualified firms. We put out a RFP, we got two bids. We checked the references on this firm, they've done work in our neighboring communities and had great reference checks. So we're hopeful that this bid will give us the same service that we asked for in the contract and save us some money going forward.
And this was a situation that arose due to the fact that the bidder, who had won this in July 2011, was no longer able to do the project, and he wanted an increase in funding.
They asked for additional funding, and we put it out to bid to give everybody another opportunity, and they bid as well, and their bid was higher than the one that we selected.
And this, a new company will be doing the exact same services.
Exact same contract that was bid before.
Our beaches look great.
It just, we just changed the opportunity to be able to award it annually again and then go forward.
Great.
There are transitional periods in this, as there was in the grass cutting. Hopefully, a short window, we will be back at the par.
All right.
So do we have a motion to D8?
Move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Winger, number nine.
Well, it's actually a kind of a tangent question, but, and I'm afraid to reference the page because it has a way of flipping to the 72nd page when I do, but it says, per city council direction, the staff has requested pricing in terms from Wells Fargo to make use of credit debit cards available in recreation facilities in the planning department. Initially, the city plans to place credit card equipment in the following four locations, Riverside Town, it's complex, community center, leisure square, and the planning department and the office. If it appears advantageous and costs advantageous, this may be expanded to other locations, including Marina and utility customer service. And I guess I just wondered why we didn't do them all, all six of them, but it's just...
I had the exact same question.
It's just a rhetorical question. I, I don't know.
Come on up.
Cindy? We're going to keep you up all night.
I do do at the Marina.
They're taking credit cards at the Marina.
Yeah, they are.
I think we had this conversation maybe during the budget workshop.
Yeah, we did. You confused me.
The electric utility, utility payments is a much bigger thing to tackle because of the requirement that those payments be integrated, the acceptance of those payments integrated into our billing system. For a standalone like Recreation, we are going to have some procedural changes, some journal entries we're going to need to post, but those are on a much smaller scale than trying to find a way to integrate, integrate a huge quantity of billing into the, or payments into the billing system itself, which is very different than our general ledger. The Marina does already accept credit cards. What we're thinking is, once we see how the volume looks and where the rates go, to, if they stay in that two to two and a half percent, if by putting the Marina, who has a separate credit card payment vendor under this, we can achieve a little better rates through some additional annual billings, we'll try it. It is going to require some procedural changes for all the departments involved, some of whom don't do whom don't do much sophisticated cash or money handling at this point. So I guess what we're saying is, let's try it in a few places where we think it'll have the most impact, and then once we work out our procedures, we'll expand it to other places, and then once we see what the timing is on the electric utility sale, maybe we could bring it all the way out to include changes for the electric utility billing.
Well, that's a good answer. Thank you.
I also have a question. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes, I just wondered if we considered then maybe offering a discount for cash? You know, if we've, if using credit cards or increasing our cost 2.5% to 3%, I think those need to be covered by the credit card customers, and then for the cash, people that want to pay by cash, we can offer them
And that was a point I was going to make, and I was going to ask either of you if it is legal to add a $1 fee or 3% or something like that. Can we do that?
You're not supposed to.
What we're told by our bank is that there was a recent court case that made it not legal to tack on percentages to credit card transactions. But we all know that there are places that somehow manage to have flat
Well, not percentages, but can they add a flat fee?
Flat fees. And so that's what we're going to need to look at, is do we either adjust our pricing accordingly, depending on the volume, or can we put in some sort of a flat convenience fee?
Or just offer a discount for cash.
Or a discount for cash. But again, that sounds simple, but is that a percentage, or is it a flat dollar? I mean, we're talking about a host of different kinds of products at Leisure Square.
Yeah.
Let's put it this way. We're really mindful of the fact that the last thing we want to do is cut into our net revenue by offering this convenience to our customers. But everything's different.
Yeah.